Call me in order, call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Katsinas.
Here.
Trustee Malani.
Here.
Trustee Compass.
Here.
Trustee Reardon.
Here.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Here.
Mayor Pico.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the April 18th, 2022 Committee of the Whole Minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Committee of the Whole of April 18th, 2022.
Second. Call the roll. Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Facilities and Operations Master Plan Presentation.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Healy.
I move to recommend to the Village Board to authorize the Public Works Department to proceed with final design development for the Public Works Site and Frederick Lobey Center Building for relocation of the Cultural Arts Center in fiscal year 2022 and Recreation Administration Building in fiscal year 2023, based on the final version of the Facilities and Operations Master Plan.
Second.
And I'll obtain a motion to amend the motion to the Franklin Labey Center.
Subpo.
Second.
Call the roll. Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye. If you want to go ahead and start the presentation?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and trustees. I'd like to introduce two of the key parties with the legat. Len Winters is to my right and Kristen Easton is to his right. They were both very instrumental in coming up with what they did over this past couple of months, and we'd like to present that to you tonight. With that, I'm going to turn it to Len.
We were brought on by the village to analyze 21 facilities around the village. You know, the first thing we did, it was a four-part study. So, the first thing we did was we looked at the facilities for, you know, just the shape of the facilities, the state they were in. So, we looked at them for, we assessed the sites, we assessed structural, we assessed envelopes, we assessed, you know, the infrastructure, and then we also looked at codes. We looked at, we just looked at things like how the people used them. So, you know, we wanted to get, look at your buildings for, you know, the sake of what did they look like in their present state. Then we met with the people who used the buildings, so we tried to come at it from a different standpoint. Were these buildings functional? Did the users who were in the buildings, could they work efficiently? And then, you know, we looked at it from that standpoint as to how could we improve the buildings. And then, finally, after we did that, we also took two other facilities to a higher level, which was a design development state, which is, we looked at the Recreation Administration Center and we looked at Public Works. And, you know, we tried to, after we looked at those first two studies, then we tried to figure out how we could make these buildings work better. So, we'll take you through what we did. For our Phase One analysis, here are some of the things we looked at. We looked at sites, you know, some of the things we found were, you know, just, you know, entries, concrete being cracked, things like that. It wasn't that much, but, you know, those were the things we studied. Then we looked at envelopes. How could we improve some of the envelopes of some of the buildings? We looked at the interior state of some of the buildings, you know. We saw things like, you know, you had old finishes, things that needed to be freshened up. And then, we looked at, we started getting into things like structural systems, you know. Some of the buildings, you know, like, for instance, one of the wellhouse, we thought that the structure on that was, you know, not in a great state, so that was something we recommended had to be looked at. Then we looked at infrastructure, you know, things like your mechanical systems, your electrical systems, and gave an assessment on, you know, what needed to be improved. And then, finally, we looked at codes, you know. For instance, if we found any code violations, you know, how were the buildings not keeping up with what our current codes are? So, those are all things we looked at. We put together a report, and ultimately, we made a recommendation. So, what we did was we spread the 21 buildings into three categories. Buildings that we felt are in great shape, you know, good condition, the recommendation was those things could stay online. We didn't really need to do much, except there were some things, some minor repairs that needed to be done to them. Then there was a second category, which was buildings that we believed should be monitored, because there were some concerns that we thought should be taken care of. And then, finally, a fourth category of buildings that we felt were at a stage where the condition they were in versus the cost of repair versus their use, we thought, we recommended that those buildings might be consolidated and their use could be moved to one of your other facilities and then ultimately taken offline. We put together this matrix, which would kind of give you an understanding of, you know, what we looked at. So, we looked at, you know, we highlighted the structural systems, the mechanical systems, just about every system we looked at, and then we gave it a rating, whether it was in, you know, great condition to poor condition. We did a color coding system for that, so you can see things that are green would be in good condition, all the way down to things that are bright red. So, again, we broke that into the three categories, the buildings that are, you know, should be kept online, buildings that should be monitored, and then, finally, buildings that should be taken offline. And then, we also gave you just an estimate of how long we think these buildings could last. And ultimately, that was the end of our Phase One report. And then, we moved into the second phase, where we started talking to people and finding out how they use the buildings.
Hello. Okay, so, looking at our Phase Two assessment, this is where we are looking closer to the function of the buildings and not just their structure and their current conditions. We're going to focus just on a couple of the buildings for the Phase Two presentation today. This is the Recreation Administration Building. What was discovered at this building was that there was spaces that were not being used efficiently, including the cell block area, which is currently used for storage, but the cell block layout is not conducive to that purpose. Also, some of the office spaces on the upper floor are not being utilized, some are not, are more vacant, and then others are not being utilized good enough. And the staff is in different places. Some of the other issues was that Recreation Administration is located in multiple buildings, mostly storage. Also, the Parks Department is in a different building, and to consolidate the department to one location would be desired. The Frank Lobe Center is in good condition, but its spaces are also underutilized with the preschool function. This building could house all of the functions of the Cultural Arts Center, which was identified in the Phase One portion, to be a building that would potentially no longer be operated. So, looking at moving that function to this building, we could do that with some renovations to the building. This would be designed in a later phase. This is just kind of a test fit view, but we could repurpose some of these areas and have the gym also, while functioning as a gym, it maybe also be a part of a theater. We could have storage for theater in this building, though wellhouse storage would probably still need to remain due to the size of this building. And then, multi-function purpose rooms for some of the larger spaces that are available. On the upper floor, this is where the preschool is located with some renovation of this space. We could make larger dance studios, more multipurpose use spaces, and keep the walking track, which could also maybe double as a catwalk for theater performances when in use. And besides some of the renovations that would need to take place to change the function of the building, the Phase One identified repairs and maintenance would also need to be completed. The Civic Center, for its main purpose, would still just remain as is, and would just also be able to be used as overflow for the Cultural Arts Center, because it would be in the same campus and the functions would be very close together. So, when some of the rooms in the Civic Center are not being utilized during the day or for other purposes, they could be used as overflow for programs for the Cultural Arts Center, kind of make more of a campus feel for that. Looking at the Recreation Administration Building, we took this one step further, besides just analyzing its function, to propose some potential solutions for consolidating storage spaces and the offices. As you can see in this illustration, the Recreation Administration's storage is located in multiple buildings across the village, and we're looking to consolidate that. In order to do that, we would want to do some renovations to the lower level. This would remove the cell block configuration and create large, flexible storage spaces that could also potentially be accessed through garage doors from the exterior for easy access with pallets and larger items. And also, on the old locker room area, redoing the toilet area and additional storage spaces in the upper right-hand corner would also allow to get almost all of the storage that we would need for the building. On the upper level, this would just be repurposing the spaces, redoing some layouts of the cubicle spaces and redefining offices to better use some of the spaces, also creating a multipurpose kind of break room slash meeting room that could be used with the kitchen. And as you can see in the chart, that we are almost at the exact storage number that we would need to be at, and with some consolidation of storage, we should be able to meet the demands for the department with doing some renovations to this building. I think we're going to go to Public Works.
After that, the next building we looked at was Public Works, was slightly larger, and it had a few more concerns than Recreation Administration. The main concerns were, I'll start with the NRF facility, which is separated, so there was a desire to consolidate that, the staff at Public Works, because the management is currently at Public Works, and most of their vehicles are there too. The other things that we were looking at was the existing parking lot at Public Works was too small. There was a desire to expand that. We had issues with the existing garages, the metal garages in the southwest corner. They are old buildings that are past their useful life, and there was a desire to upgrade those to a more modern garage facility. Also, the existing north garage, the main garage, that is, we found after studying, you know, the vehicle fleet, that it wasn't large enough to hold the current vehicles that Public Works has. So, there was a desire to expand that to make it fit the current fleet. There was also a unused triangle in the southeast corner of the site. It's currently overgrown, and there was a desire to reclaim that site so that Public Works could use it for outdoor activities and bring it back into the fold. Couple of other things that were looked at, there is an existing fueling island. The fuel tanks needed to be replaced, so that was something we looked at. And also, there is a police firing range on the site. We'll go into that a little more, but it posed some challenges. One of the things was activities from the firing range could be heard at the restaurants to the east, so that was something that wasn't desirable, you know. So, there was the desire to move it out of there. And also, just the conditions that it created on site. And then, the existing impound yard, which is also on the site, it started, when you see us get into the design, you'll see that it starts to encroach on the use of the Public Works Site. And it does currently, but, you know, so the new design shows that it actually becomes more of an issue, because it starts squeezing the space that the trucks can use. So, we took all of these into consideration when we started looking at the new design for this facility. Also, I mentioned that the NRF staff was separated. You can see from this graphic that NRF has materials and staff and vehicles, just separated throughout the village, while, you know, their main fleet and their management is at Public Works. And there was the desire to bring everybody together, so that was something we considered. Also, I mentioned the vehicle fleet before. This is a list of all the vehicles that Public Works has. You know, there are some that are identified with stars beside them. Those could be stored outside, so we didn't take that into consideration when we redesigned the garage. But we did redesign the garages so that they could hold the vehicle fleet that Public Works currently has. And then, finally, I talked about the firing range. So, this is the makeup. It is a, it has a target wall, and then wood slat walls on either sides. They're open. As you can see from the pictures, there's a close-up that shows you how the walls are made up. And then, the final picture shows you, look straight down the driveway to Public Works. You can actually see one of those wood slat walls. So, we thought this wasn't, this didn't create a safe condition, you know, just in case something happened, because there are trucks coming up and down that driveway, and, you know, you never know what could happen. So, we thought this was something that we should consider taking care of. So, with the firing range, actually, I'll move right into that. We were told that the village does own land that's right next to their current bulk storage site. You can see that long, narrow site at the bottom in red. That's the bulk storage site. And then, there's a yellow triangle or yellow square just up to the right of it. That is free land that the village owns, and it just so happens that that would be enough to house a new firing range and an impound site, so we considered that. Also, this site is close to industrial buildings, and it is close to the existing fire training facility, so putting a shooting range there would be putting like next to like, and we wouldn't, we'd get rid of that problem of when the, when activity is happening at the firing range, people in the restaurants would hear the activity. And this is a quick overview of what the new design would be. So, what we're doing here is, I talked about the metal garages on the south side being past their useful life, so the concept would be to remove those garages and replace them with the new NRF facility, which would house all of the NRF staff, bring all the functions back to the Public Works Site. And then, on the north side, in the space of the existing garage, what we would do is we would just expand the existing north garage, so that you can see, we're designating all the vehicles with those colors. So, we would have, we would rebuild these garages so that they would house the vehicles that need to be stored inside. We'd also add a new salt shed and a new loading dock to this facility, and then there would be some site improvements, things such as adding, extending the parking lot, as I spoke about before. We would also add a weigh scale at the northeast corner of the site, and then, at the southeast corner, we would reclaim that triangle by paving it, adding their loading, their material bins there. We would also have areas for outdoor storage, and we would have storage sheds that they could actually put materials into, the things that needed, that didn't have to necessarily be indoors, but they would, they'd want to be covered from the rain. So, that's the concept for the south side of the site. And then, there would be some improvement inside the building. Mainly, we would add a, or expand their current lunchroom, make that a new training room. That would become a multipurpose space that could be used for training, for lunches, and also just a staff break room. And then, there would be some modification to a couple of the spaces, the roll call center and the current conference room, so that those functions would be moved to the new multipurpose room, so they could become offices for staff. This is proposed to be done in phases. So, as you can see, we're showing, this would be Phase One, where all the site work would be done. So, that would include the things I talked about, expanding the parking lot, doing the fuel island, the storage bins. That would be Phase One. After that, we would move into second phase, which would be adding the NRF facility, doing the interior renovations at the existing building. Phase Three would then involve the redesign of the shooting range. Here, you can see a blow up. So, on the left, you could see the site. We're showing the new shooting range at the left side with a new impound yard on the right. And then, the blow up shows, you know, just the way this thing would be configured. You know, it's got an entrance. We're showing a new training facility. We're also showing a simulation room. There would be a 25-yard shooting range. And then, just the functions that would, you know, create a state-of-the-art shooting range. And then, we're also showing the ability to drive into this, so that if the police needed to, they could actually bring vehicles in, so that they could work on vehicle simulations. So, that would be the concept with this one, just a new shooting range with an impound yard on that site that's currently owned by the village. And then, finally, Phase Four would involve expanding the north garage, so this would be the larger of the two garages, and this would be where most of the vehicle fleet would be stored. We'd also have the salt storage bin and a new loading dock. And then, finally, we did a summary of what we're thinking this would come to. So, we're showing that we do, this new facility would provide about 5,000 square feet more storage than what's currently there. And then, also, just looking at the phases, Phase One would be, you know, the target would be for that to come in at 5 million. Phase Two target would be to come in at 5 million. Phase Three, the shooting range, would be a little more expensive at six and a half. And then, Phase Four, another 5 million. And that would be the bulk of what we're doing for the renovation of Public Works. And with that, that's the, that's our presentation.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Yes. Thank you. I know, George, we've talked about the situation with the garage at the Rec Admin Building multiple times. So, it looks like here, we're kind of still going to be keeping our near-end-of-life emergency vehicles outside versus in a garage?
That is the plan, so there is no additional garage space for vehicles.
Okay. And I think one of the other things we talked about is NIMS compliance, having a rest area for people if we have to actually activate the center.
For the EOC.
Yes. And do we have a space in mind for that if we need to? Because...
Currently, no, but when we do the, currently, no, but when we do the final design, we'll have to look at that then.
Okay. And we'll also be removing the changing rooms in the locker rooms, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the locker room and restrooms would be remodeled.
Okay. And then, as far as the new range, the range is going to be completely enclosed?
Yes.
Okay, so there'll be no outside?
Yes.
So, yeah, the noise won't be an issue at all then in the new area?
Correct.
Okay. And the training room and the simulator in there, will that be moved from the police department then to the new range, the simulator and the training room that we have there?
We were thinking the simulator, but there's a training room next to the current range on site.
Okay.
So, that would be what that training room would be, but the simulator room, we were talking with the police, potentially could be in that building, because they're a little tight at PD as well, so this could free up some space for them.
Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
So, Mr. Mayor, this is part of our overall comprehensive review of all of our capital items, and what will happen here is we will take all this information with the information that we have for all of our other large, longer-range plans as part of our five-year financial that will be occurring in the coming months.
Mr. Mayor, has one of these been done, you know, over the last five or 10 years? Is this adding on to something that was previously done? Is this the first time that we're, as far as you know, Mr. Mayor?
I don't know of any. It hasn't been done since I've been here.
Okay.
To the best of our knowledge, no. This is probably the first time to...
At least every 10 years to do something like this? And this is something...
That would be a very good practice, yeah, because things change in 10 years, but we found as we were kind of going, you can't do this piecemeal. And so, they did a fantastic job doing this in 22 slides, but if you can imagine all the work, all the puzzles that you had to kind of move around to try to get this to make sense in...
No, it's with the growth of the village, though, right? I mean, we had, you know, a plan to begin with, and then they added, and it got bigger, and there's new buildings, and, you know, they just kind of pieced it together, opposed to now doing a comprehensive plan over all of them.
Correct, right. And, for example, the building that they're talking about in Public Works right now, the old building, that was built in World War II.
Correct. It dates before 1940. It was existing building when they had...
I'm just trying to get a little background here. People may be hearing, they're seeing this, or you see it in the paper tomorrow or something about, you know, money that's going to be spent. People would like to hear a little bit about why, you know, this is necessary. I clearly understand it, but, you know, why this is necessary for us to do this and where we're going and have a plan going forward.
And it's all necessary, because we want to continue to provide the best service as possible, and we want to eliminate whatever waste we have. And we have waste right now. We have wasted space. We have wasted time, having our folks running around everywhere. So, this is all part of a lean effort to just, and to continue to provide quality service.
And trying to prioritize as well with, you know, for example, with the Public Works Site, we already talked about how it's just old, right? And so, might as well, if we're going to rebuild things, make it sized more appropriately with the additional land that we acquired with a swap a few years back. And then, Franklin Labey Center, one of the things about these buildings that we found out is, or that we've learned through this process, is they were kind of designed to get awards, and we know they weren't designed very well for functionality, and they did things like put drywall on the outside of the buildings, which we're handling this year, that drywall soffits, which, what could go wrong in the cold weather and the climate that we have here? But the Franklin Labey Center, maybe they'll make it a little bit more usable. And then, as we know, the Cultural Arts Center, there's an ability to consolidate that, and then maybe get that over to the school district, which, you know, everyone knows we've offered to the school districts, so that they can do early childhood learning and potentially the preschool program and get schools more into the schools where they belong. And then, also, some of the buildings we have, like the wellhouses, we don't really need anymore. We use them for storage. So, if we can consolidate the storage, then we don't have to maintain these wellhouses as they get, you know, old and they're no longer useful, we can just get rid of them. And obviously, the old Village Hall, which dates back as far as my memory goes, so that's over 50 years. That building is definitely beyond its useful life, so there's things that we can do there. Lastly, the garage for the Rec Department, which also is a, you know, kind of a, was a bit of an afterthought, and we do use it, but we can consolidate all that. So, if we can bring all that together, that's just going to help us to get rid of some of these buildings, so we don't have to maintain anymore, and get better facilities, and then also less expensive to operate going forward. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Pete's Fresh Market.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pete's Fresh Market requests for modification from the building code as adopted and amended by the Village Code.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to recommend to the Village Board of Trustees to approve the requested modification from the building code as adopted and amended by the Village Code to allow a reduction in the open space requirement for an unlimited-area building from 40 feet with a three-hour exterior wall and 30 feet with a three-hour exterior wall, excuse me, 230 feet with a three-hour exterior wall for no more than 62 feet in length, where the proposed addition is limited by the dedication of former Ravinia Avenue right-of-way to the Orlin Park Public Library, IBC 2018, Section 507.2.1.
Second.
And Ed, could you just give us a brief, you know, in general, what this is, is that we dedicated some of former right-of-way to the library, which is open space. It's part of their landscaping. If we still...
If we still owned it, we wouldn't even need this. But because they do, we have to reduce the limit from 40 feet to 30 feet, but it's still all landscaping that were that extra 10 feet.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and other members of the committee. The issue arose from generally a building code requirement, which is in relation to the fire code. With an area that exceeds certain, or with a building that exceeds certain area, there's a setback requirement to a property line. And that setback can include areas that are right-of-way, as the mayor mentioned. However, because a portion of this setback area was dedicated to the library, this variance request was necessary. In addition, prior to investigating the variance or pursuing the variance, the petitioner worked with the village to investigate other options, as they should prior to requesting the variance, one of which was fireproofing the interior of the building. However, after investigation of what it would take to do that, it would impede some of the operations that the tenant would like to see. Sometimes that, the coating that is used for the fireproofing is not exactly the best to have above a grocery store. And that was communicated to us, so we looked at other options. And in this instance, what they are doing is requesting the minimum amount of code relief in order to be compliant. And currently, although the area that they are, they need to be set back from is the library property, there are no structures that are built on it. So it is the staff's best recommendation that this variance be granted. And the petitioners are here from Pete's Fresh Market. This portion of the request, they wanted to get some feedback from the committee before they move forward with their final engineering and plans. They were recommended for approval at the Planning Commission for the entire development. And once, should this variance be, or should the committee see this recommend favorably, they will pursue preparing their final plans. Once those are ready, they'll be presented to the board for final approval.
Are there any comments? When I talk to staff, this is kind of a no-brainer because, again, if we hadn't dedicated the right-of-way, it would be, we wouldn't even have to worry about this. Call the roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Rieden.
Aye.
Trustee Raduszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Peacock.
Aye. Mr. Mayor? If I could, Gene Drunkovich is here from Pete's Fresh Market. Gene, if you can just, and then maybe, we're all excited about Pete's opening, so 2022, right?
2022.
2023. Our back a year. We're excited. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Main Street Triangle Consultant Presentation.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani.
Move to recommend to the Village Board of Trustees approval of the conceptual master development plan as presented, generally incorporating the recommendations of the Plan Commission. Second.
Do we have a presentation? Yes. Do you want me to pick?
No, no, no. He's going to queue it up.
Okay. Ed's going to queue it up here.
Tonight, Edwards Realty Company is going to present information that the village had retained Edwards to investigate the development potential of the Main Street Triangle and to explain sort of the phase where we're at. Previously, the village had gone to RFP and selected structured development to come to a master development agreement and ultimately develop the Main Street Triangle area. The village was notified by structured development that, given the circumstances with the pandemic, that they could no longer move forward with what was going to be the master plan. As such, and in the interest of the Village Board and the residents of the Village of Orland Park, we still wanted to investigate if development was feasible. In order to do so, we engaged Edwards Realty, and they did a year of due diligence, as well as met with key stakeholders, including members of the staff, to understand what the vision of the board was. And through those meetings, they further investigated with the development community to see if there were users that were still interested and able to make this development happen. What will be presented now is the consultant's findings. This information was also presented at the April 12 Plan Commission meeting, with the Plan Commission ultimately voting in favor and recommending approval of the conceptual plan and narrative. They did mention several items that they would like to make sure are included, and I will mention those now. And the reason that I'm bringing those up is after the presentation from Edwards Realty, when this is taken for a vote by the Village Board, if you read the motion and include the terms as presented, that includes the items that were investigated by the Plan Commission or kind of specifically requested from the Plan Commission. To a certain extent, those items were included in the discussion that took place, but for clarification, I will reiterate them and if the motion will be to recommend as presented. If there are any changes to what the Planning Commission had discussed or recommended, or if there are any changes to what Edwards Realty presents, then most certainly the board is able to adjust those motions or add or take away any of those items. So in specific, the information that the Planning Commission wanted to see is they wanted to make sure that if we consider leasing space at the metro station, this is a little far past where we are at this point, but if that takes place, that we investigate with whoever the selected developer is, that it would be possible to be a tax-generating use. In addition, they want to see an overlook for the detention pond and maintain all the existing pathways that connect to the Main Street Triangle. And to a certain extent, the discussion was to expand upon those existing pedestrian and bicycle paths so that there are more points of entry for non-automobiles to the Main Street Triangle. And then the final sort of, one other thing to sort of piggyback on that idea, they mentioned pretty specifically that the detention pond that is existing at the site should be utilized as an asset. And if there's any way to create that as more of an amenity as opposed to stormwater, just strictly for stormwater purposes, that the selected developer investigate those opportunities. Finally, this one is just basically something, a general development principle, but they wanted to, they made the comment that the selected developer should prioritize the land available based on the market demand. So there's a range of land uses that the consultant will speak about that some of the sites may be suitable for. Obviously, all of those land uses don't require the same amount of land, infrastructure, or things, but the comment was specifically to say, if you're going to recommend for, let's say, a hotel or a large user of land, that you prioritize those recommendations so that you can fill each parcel with the highest and best use. And ultimately, that was the Plan Commission's discussion and recommendation. So that was reviewed and recommended for approval, and that's what leaves us today. The same presentation with that information included will be presented to the committee. And Ramsey Hassan from Edwards Realty Company is here to present.
And so the board is aware, these are not specifics, these are, this is a general plan for what, we have to go up for, what, 45 days?
Yeah. After this, there will be an RFP that will be issued. Edwards is our consultant at this stage. After this, using this concept plan, an RFP will be issued, will be open for 45 days, and then we will have developers that will submit proposals, and then we will evaluate those proposals, ultimately leading to a master development agreement with a developer.
But this will basically inform the RFP? Go ahead.
All right. Thank you very much. Pleasure to be here, Mayor, Village Board. I'm Ramsey Hassan with Edwards Realty Company, been retained by the Village of Orland Park to provide consulting services to formulate a conceptual master development plan for the remaining approximately nine acres currently undeveloped within the Main Street Triangle District. We've spent a great deal of time over the last year. We live in the area, work in the area, understand the marketplace, especially this northern part of Orland Park. And we, our goal is to really further the village's policy positions in this master development. And we understand that the goal for the Main Street Triangle is to create a very pedestrian-friendly and economically vibrant mixed-use neighborhood that embraces retail, commercial, office, entertainment, hotel, and/or residential development that's consistent within the Village Center District. The current existing parcels that are nearby the train station, Orland Park Crossing, Mariano's Fresh Market, 9750 on the park, and the University of Chicago. Sometime last year, we did a series of surveys and studies where we had a public, open public meeting. We had online surveys and text surveys throughout the Village of Orland, which we had an incredible response to. And a lot of that is visualized here on this graph. And walkability, you know, came up time and time again. Community connections and quality time and all the other spheres around there that kind of build into that. But that was a major theme. Obviously, art and culture, every downtown needs. We have somewhat of an existing water feature, but to build upon that and actually have it as a centerpiece, lots of shared space, so not just single-use space. So that greatly kind of was at the very forefront of the process that started our analysis. These are just some images of the kind of entertainment district activations that we'll talk about that, you know, came up time and time again, bars, restaurants, entertainment, uses for all ages is paramount here. And that's what did come back in a lot of these surveys. Now, also the public space activation, which I mentioned earlier in the earlier bubble, to have a vibrant community center, you need public spaces. And this does not just mean one giant park. This means potentially several spaces throughout the development, including a park, that have the ability for public space activation. Now, this is the master plan parcel legend. Now, this was created with the planning staff of the Village of Orland Park, civil engineers, along with our architects and engineers to not only see what the best uses are, but how they interact with each other. Now, this is the basis, we feel, to create a planned unit development. And this is just the beginning of the process. This is our recommendation. And, you know, obviously, whoever comes in with a more detailed plan would have to go through the process and to produce a final master development plan. We recommend the following limitations and minimums to define some of the balance of uses in this conceptual development plan. In order to assure that the balance of uses maintain a mixed-use blend, which I think we would all deem desirable, the residential components shall not exceed 55% of the total redevelopment F A R for the remaining nine acres. So we want to limit the amount of residential development and focus more on the commercial and retail development. We do feel like there should be an office component. Every downtown central business district has an office component. We feel it's underrepresented right now in the area, so office should exceed 30,000 square feet at a minimum here. And if parcel E is developed to include any commercial space, that should be an office building as well, and I'll get into parcel E further on in the report. Now, there are eight conceptual lots right now, with the balance of the land making up the area known as the Main Street Triangle today. Today, parcel D is fully built out with the 9750 on the park building. Parcels F and G are developed with village-owned public parking garage and the University of Chicago Medicine Building. The remaining nine acres of land are vacant and are part of this recommendation for the conceptual master development plan. Now, the following, I'll go through each parcel and talk about the recommendations. So parcels A and B at the northernmost part of the lot. This is what we're looking at, especially down Jefferson Street, is more of an entertainment district, but still having a mixed-use component. Currently, the village offers Metro parking on this parcel. The village will be obligated via previous agreement with Metro to maintain these spaces somewhere in proximity to the train station. But what this does is gives the developers some flexibility to actually develop this parcel and will not inhibit the development. We are requiring that any building built on this parcel be a mixed-use building. We define that on parcels A and B, we have ground-floor retail, multifamily residential, hotel, parking. And parcel B, we have ground-floor retail, multifamily residential, hotel, office, and parking. Now, these aren't all the uses that have to be included, but these are the uses that we're contemplating. So, for example, parcel A may have ground-floor retail and multifamily residential, and parcel B may have ground-floor retail and an office component. So staying on parcel A, we recommend that the first floor of any building with retail space totaling at least 50,000 square feet in the aggregate when combined. So both parcels A and B ground floors should have at least 50,000 square feet of retail. With associated parking, it could include lobbies, entryways, and other common improvements for the upper stories. But the upper stories must be hotel, office, or multifamily residential. Consequently, with parcel B, same type of requirements for the 50,000 square feet on the first floor combined. And the upper story, the only difference, we have office as a contemplated use. It's closer to La Grange Road, has some visibility. As we were working with some of the engineers on the planning, to put, if there was a residential component, kind of putting it back by the train tracks near the detention pond would be a favorable and marketable site for a multifamily development, whereas parcel B would be more favorable and marketable to office users, should that use be included in the multi-story building. We'll move on to parcel C. This is just west of the 9750 building along 143rd Street. The uses that we would contemplate here are retail, there's been interest from daycare facilities and schools, additional parking, or a multifamily residential development. But we're recommending only multifamily here if no residential on parcels A or B. So if for some reason there is no residential on the previous parcels that I just talked about, it would be appropriate for residential development to be here on parcel C. So this, we're looking at a mix of, you know, some flexibility here and commercial uses on 143rd Street. So we have the Metro parking parcel, which is next to the train station. This we are contemplating because we're assuming it will be needed, especially with removing some Metro parking spaces on parcels A and B, along with bringing in some uses that may have some heavy parking requirements at different times of the day. Either surface parking here, which it is now, or structured parking, which would be a parking deck here. So we can maximize the parking near the metro station by potentially building a parking deck here to accommodate some of the surrounding uses. The metro station, we're recommending that the village can really activate this and sublease a portion of the train station to the master developer to incorporate a retail or restaurant use at this key location. This could also reduce maintenance costs, generate additional sales tax revenue, and provide train station amenities used by the community. Coming out of the pandemic, we've seen ridership up. I believe there are plans down the line for increased trains, express trains, those kind of things happening. So to position ourselves to have the maximum amount of potential commuters, we have to have those amenities in place. And we think that could be a way to unlock that, that is not being utilized currently. The Crescent Park parcel, this is currently where Crescent Park is, and we're recommending to relocate the park to parcel E for a better and more... to relocate the park to parcel E for a better and more accessible pedestrian area that's really centrally located between the parcels. What we are recommending for this parcel is a large-scale indoor entertainment use with a capacity for about 1,000 people minimum and 50,000 square feet or more. A floor area as a key element to draw large groups of people into the area. Now, a lot of successful retail developments, downtown areas have to have multiple traffic drivers here. And an entertainment parcel, or entertainment building within an amphitheater is really a use for the community, brings in business, multiple businesses and residents from other communities coming to our community to spend money and enjoy themselves. Most of the demand for the entertainment use will be in the evenings after 5:00 p.m., which is very compatible with the shared use of the 600-space Metro parking lot and 500-space free Village parking deck, which are available after 3:00 p.m. and 5:00 p.m. respectively. So essentially, here we have 600 parking spaces at our disposal that are required to be there or already there that are free. And most of the uses that happen right now are daytime. So we would like to recycle those spaces to have an evening use without necessarily having to build parking from scratch for those specific uses. So we feel like that really should be utilized and looked at. Moving on to parcel E, which I mentioned moving Crescent Park to, that's the large parcel in the center really of the triangle here. We feel like a public park with significant amenities should cover at least 50% of this parcel, if not all of the parcel. Now, how we came to this conclusion, we were working with white architects that are currently now hired by the village to do master planning of all the public parks. So we approached them, talked to them about not only the master plan throughout the whole village, but what are we missing? What are key elements here that can differentiate us from other municipalities, but also complement all the existing facilities in the area? And they have some very cool ideas on how to activate this. And I think that, you know, having that space and actually some of that shape is very conducive for talking about coming from the north where the pond is, and parcels A and B coming out of the entertainment district into, you know, kind of a pedestrian-friendly but active park. And then you have kind of those parking lots that we talked about all around there. Now, while it's not a requirement, if there is a commercial building to be developed on this parcel, it should be, it could be a single-use or vertical use, but it's recommended to include office. If it's a vertical mixed-use building, the first floor could be retailer, restaurant, but the upper floor should be office. The existing parking structure that the University of Chicago uses that is village-owned contemplated kind of a sky deck. So there is a place, I believe it's on the second-floor lobby, that could connect to a building directly north of it. So, you know, that was kind of our thought process. If we needed to have some of that office, which we are seeking in this area, we could put it in parcel E, have it close proximity to the parking garage, potentially even connecting to it. Move on to parcel F. So this is an existing 12,000-square-foot commercial space on the ground floor of the village-owned parking garage. This is a cold, dark shell. There's no systems in there. It's essentially boarded up. So it would need significant construction to even become a white box. But we think it's ideally suited for a variety of Village Center District uses, including without limitation, retail uses, restaurant, potentially office. But that is a space where it can be activated fairly quickly with a build-out. I will move on to parcel H. This is the, we'll call it an outlot on La Grange Road, essentially an extension of the University of Chicago's parking lot. This, you know, this really is an outlot along La Grange Road that we recommend using for retail, no greater than two stories to not inhibit any visibility into the rest of the triangle, or for office and/or existing parking lot uses.
How big is that parcel H?
That parcel H, it's about, I think it's 1.4 acres.
Yeah, but how big are you proposing on the...
Oh, how big of a...
Yeah.
A building?
Yep.
There are several different configurations, but you can do up to about 12,000 square Depending on the uses. Couple more things to note. Okay, I do want to mention that, and I'll go back to the first slide so we can see the overview as we discuss further. So there are a couple other caveats to this. There's exclusivity that we have to be mindful of. So the village previously agreed to a non-compete provision within the triangle with the University of Chicago. So a lot of medical uses really have to be looked at to make sure that they don't compete with the University of Chicago or the University of Chicago proposes, certainly can propose an expansion of their existing facilities. So prohibited medical uses are definitely a deterrent since most of the office-based users that are in the market right now are medical. So that prohibits us from, you know, leasing to another hospital system or another medical facility. Should also want to mention that the stormwater, drainage, detention requirements, and volume control have all increased since this development was contemplated. So those all have to be addressed. And, you know, in some cases, capacity has to be increased, which is, as we all know, can be very expensive. Utilities and roads. So the utilities were put in here and the roads were put in here for a very specific development, which is no longer viable and, you know, obviously has never come to fruition. So, you know, I'll cut to the chase. There are millions of dollars that have to be spent to relocate these utilities and to relocate roads perhaps. Even the existing roads are pretty narrow. So talking about what, you know, the amount of vehicular traffic we'll have coming in there, those things have to be thought about. And that's why we're putting a lot of the parking, you know, kind of keeping it somewhat around the periphery so you don't, you know, don't have vehicles just driving through constantly. But those things have to be reworked as well. I discussed, you know, the parking conditions and the village's obligation to relocate Metro parking when there's a development of those parcels. And once the uses, you know, are defined in here, a shared parking study should be conducted so that we can make sure that there's appropriate parking at the appropriate times. Signage, wayfinding, and placemaking, you know, we started the process, but there needs to be a robust and comprehensive design over here for wayfinding and placemaking and in the development as a whole to make it very cohesive. And the thing I mentioned right at the beginning, I will also end with, and that is the pedestrian accessibility. That's what kind of came out of the Plan Commission. I know it's already in the village code for the Village Center District. And it's, you know, it's something that is always at the forefront, especially here. But we feel like we need to make an emphasis that there will be a pedestrian corridor, or should be a pedestrian corridor, going through parcels A and B and vacating Jefferson Avenue to vehicular traffic and activating it for pedestrian use only. The new walkway should be integrated with the detention pond to the north of the site and all the other pathways that surround it. Direct accessibility to the Orland Bike Way as well should be emphasized. I know a lot of people use it now. Once there is something actually at the base of it by the train station, I think that's going to get a lot of use from the community. So we appreciate the time and are honored to have been able to be part of this. And can take any questions or comments.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Trusty Ried.
Hi, Rami, how are you?
Good, how are you?
How's the knee doing, by the way?
It's doing better.
Good, good. I just had one quick question on the 55% regarding residential. How's that formula developed? Especially if you put in some, you know, the park and the parking lot, is that all inclusive of the whole square footage of the whole place? How does that work?
Before you answer that, I'm going to jump on that as well because the number that we've been working with since the beginning of time is 45% residential. So where did this 55% come in?
Well, that's the Florida area ratio. That has to do with, when we talk to the marketplace, it doesn't make sense, let's say, to build 100 units. It doesn't make sense here to build 200 units. It's almost like 250 to 300 ish units are the sweet spot. And it would have been negligible on my part to put something in the report that is not marketable. So if we were to move forward, and we have a ton of open space. So this is just counting the total square footages of the buildings. And, you know, 300-unit building is 300,000 square feet. So, you know, we have to build, and that couldn't be more than 55% of the total development. So a 20,000-square-foot office building takes up a lot more space, land than a 20,000-square-foot of residential. So those ratios were kind of thought of as what will the market bear here? But also, we're only contemplating on certain parcels. So that would be, you know, you're just adding more stories to parcel A, essentially, instead of spreading it out through the site.
And, Mr. Mayor and Trusty Ried, again, this is the ceiling for...
I understand it's the ceiling, but when, I mean, I've been sitting in a lot of these meetings and it was always 45%. Now I see 55%. It got my attention when he said something in the presentation. And I just did the math. That's 750 square feet a unit at 300 units. Those are really small units. Not if it's a hotel. I'm assuming in a hotel, you're not counting its residential.
Correct.
So that's pretty small units. It's basically becoming a residential area.
Remind us how much the whole thing is so everyone's on the same page. What's the whole project? How many square feet approximately?
Well, I can't really say because I'm just proposing uses here.
Sure.
I'm not really proposing buildings. That's not my assignment at this time.
Approximately.
Six, 700,000, I would say.
Because the minimums required here come to 124,000 in commercial space, which would be 150,000 in residential.
And this is exactly what this conversation is about. So if we're looking to develop the concept plan, then I think it'd be appropriate for the board to amend that to make it 45% maximum.
But, Mr. Mayor, just going back to Rami, and that was my next follow-up question is, you know, during this last year, you've been out there seeing what the market is, talking to developers, seeing what they're, you know, and presenting these general ideas, right? Is this what you've been doing?
Yes.
Okay. And so you're coming back with what you're hearing?
Yes.
Is that you need to make it viable so that the city bear the, you know, unbelievable cost of doing this. To balance that out, you need certain residential components of this to make it work. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, yeah. Any, you know, successful development, mixed-use development like this should have significant residential component in a thoughtful manner. So that's why when we looked at it, you know, 9750 is a different type of construction. You know, that's what's called a wrap, you know, building. That's why it takes up such a larger parcel. I think there's another way to do it called the podium style, which we would be, which is all that parcel A could fit. So you have probably the same amount of residential units, same amount of residents, but in a smaller parcel, like on parcel A, maybe with a little more height, but with parking kind of integrated into it, not around it.
Mr. Mayor?
Trusty, or Ed?
I'll switch with the ad right now.
Ed's fine, Ed's fine, no worries. So just to clarify from my initial introduction, basically Ramsey and Edwards Realty is presenting what they found out in the market. As we know, some of the vision for this area, because the village acquired it and it's so important to the development of Orland Park, there are things that the village wants to see there that they wouldn't necessarily be able to require of a private development. And if one of those items is less residential than what has been investigated initially by the consultant, then that's a decision that the village board needs to make. And the underlying principle of how we're developing this site is that the village is willing to offer the incentive in the form of TIF dollars, as it is right now, to make that vision come true. So it's not saying you're going to necessarily, you're incentivizing the entire development so that if there's a gap created by something that the village wants that the market can't meet, then that's what those funds are used for, subject to them being TIF-eligible costs.
Yeah. And I guess what I'm saying is that, we have been in a lot of meetings and it's 45% of it was residential as far as what we were looking at. And again, if we're going to provide TIF dollars for this, I mean, as this is written right here, you basically could have a 275,000-square-foot total development, of which 150 of it is residential, with 750 square-foot units. I don't think that's what, I mean, I just don't think that's what we've envisioned. And that's the minimum required here. Now, I realize people may come in with more, no question about that. But I know that, you know, our discussions have been, if we're going to, you know, what does the village need? What do we want? We want to see more office space. And I realize the market won't completely bear it. And we'll have to, we'll have to provide some TIF dollars to offset costs so that the rents can be lower so that office component comes in here. But anyways, that's what we've always, at least that's my position. My position is, you know, no more than 45% residential. And that's what we told, that's what we told structured. If it was 55% residential, they probably, you know, they may have started, frankly.
So it does say not to exceed 300 units, and the 55% is a function of the whole. So, you know, when it was proposed, potentially 100,000 or 120,000 square feet of office, you know, that fits right in that parameter. But, you know, now going to the market, we know we want a minimum of 30,000 square feet that we're recommending. So that's not a function of increasing residential units. It's more of a function of making sure we can still have, you know, maintain a market multifamily development and still be within the parameters of, you know, some office space. Otherwise, the multifamily developer theoretically could be at the mercy of, how much office space are we getting this year?
Well, again, we're trying to develop this for the residents of Orland Park, not for the residents that moved to Orland Park. And so in my view, it needs to be more commercial, less residential. That's my personal opinion. It's kind of up to the board. But that's been our position. And that's been my position since day one and in every meeting we've ever been in. So I don't think this is a change to anything that I've ever said. So...
Mr. Mayor, I'm just trying to understand the process, my first time going through this. Does that mean if we stick to that, and I agree with you, I think that we want to make it as limited of a residential as we can to make it work. And then does that mean, you know, if you went and turned around and said, okay, Mr. Mayor, they said, no, 45%, he goes back out to the market, then we fill in the gap, right?
Yeah. And if the market can't do it, and they're saying, well, we need, because I know right now you could fill it with apartments.
Yeah.
And the people of Orland Park would be justly nuts. Hey, listen, nobody here, Ramsey, our staff, none of us were here when this disaster was started. And we've sunk $100 million into it, right? None of us had anything, none of us here had anything to do with that. We're trying to correct that. But personally, I'd rather see it sit a parking lot for another 10 years and turn it into something that's good for us in the long term than accept something that's not good for the village in the long term. That's my personal opinion.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I generally agree with all that. I'm trying to figure out practically today what we're voting on and what we're doing is to say, go out to the market, come back, and then we can decide, is it so much money to fill that gap from what the developers will develop and what we're willing to pay, which what we've already paid is enormous, like you said, right?
So what we're doing is setting parameters to go out to the market and say, you must meet these parameters. So we're saying, we're not going to...
Right. And if nobody comes back, nobody comes back.
We expect you, you know, minimum or maximum 45% residential.
Yeah.
If we say that, that's what we expect to come back from the marketplace.
And if he comes back and says, nobody came back, or some people came back, but they got to move this, this is what their caveat is, then we can make it...
We could always adjust if we wanted to. But, I mean, that's my personal opinion. My personal opinion is the people of Orland Park want, I mean, you saw what they wanted. And residential ain't one of them.
I agree.
I think, would we all agree on that? So we want to minimize residential as much as possible. And I would say even in the document, if it's 45%, that we want, 45% is the maximum, but we'd like to see the minimum amount of residential needed to make the project work. And, you know, obviously, a hotel, that's not even counted as residential. So if you get a hotel, then obviously you're never going to get to that number with residential. get a hotel, that obviously, you're never going to get to that number with residential. Board have any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Trusty Katsinas.
Just wanted to thank you, Ramsey, for bringing your insight, your experience, you're a local gentleman, your family's in the commercial business, so that really showed in your presentation, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, my pleasure.
Any, any other comments? I'll entertain a motion to, to amend the motion to, to change the recommendation or the, the recommendations to minimum, maximum 45% residential.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments on that? Call the roll on the amended, amendment.
Trusty Katsinas?
Aye.
Trusty Campas?
Aye.
Trusty Healy?
Aye.
Trusty Malani?
Aye.
Trusty Reardon?
Aye.
Trusty Rascheski?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Trusty Malani?
Aye.
Trusty Campas?
Aye.
Trusty Healy?
Aye.
Trusty Katsinas?
Aye.
Trusty Reardon?
Aye.
Trusty Rascheski?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Is there any unscheduled visitors? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Call the roll.
Trusty Campas?
Aye.
Trusty Katsinas?
Aye.
Trusty Healy?
Aye.
Trusty Malani?
Aye.
Trusty Reardon?
Aye.
Trusty Rascheski?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Adjourned 7:20, actual 7:20, not that, so it's like eight minutes.